I'd like to open up today with prayer and prayers. The prayer will be led by Tobias Councilman Young, and I will do the pledge.
He's my guest.
Gotta talk loud.
Dear Heavenly Father, we would like to thank you for providing a safe passage here and from this meeting that we have today. We ask that you touch our hearts and our minds with your compassion as we conduct business here today on behalf of the City of Saginaw and its residents. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own. We're all called Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Young.
Present.
Councilmember Seals.
Present.
Councilmember Walsh.
Present.
Mayor Ross and Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Councilmember Raddock.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
And your mother. Present. Again, good evening. This meeting of City Council is an open meeting. I ask that the audience remain from clapping, booing, and any obnoxious behavior. Councilpersons, please silence your phones and your computers. Audience, if you would do the same, I truly would appreciate it. Once again, this is a meeting, and I'd just like to remind everyone, it is a public meeting, and it is going to be aired on the web page. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
Mayor, we have one of the fourth annual We Love Saginaw Businesses on Mercury event is this Wednesday from 4:30 to 6:30 in the parking lot of the Splash Pad at 18:30 to 4:00. Vendors can still sign up to participate by contacting Cassie Zimmerman. We have a proclamation on the agenda that's recognizing the 75th anniversary of Good Row the Florists.
And that proclamation will be read by Mayor Pro Tem Garcia.
The City of Saginaw Proclamation. Whereas Good Row the Florists has proudly served the residents of the City of Saginaw for 75 years, providing exceptional floral arrangements and outstanding customer service since its founding by Raymond Goodrow. And whereas, under the leadership of Raymond's children, Gary Goodrow and Jeanette Goodrow Balian, the current owner, the florists have upheld its legacy as a family-owned and operated establishment. This enduring legacy now embraces a third generation of florists, including Jeanette's daughter, Elizabeth Balian. I'm sorry if I'm saying it wrong. Nearly every family member leading their talents at various points throughout the years. And whereas, this longstanding business has been a cornerstone of Saginaw's economic vitality, creating jobs, supporting local suppliers, and contributing to the community. Good Row the Florists has constantly given back to the community through participation in civic events, contributions to charitable organizations, and supports for schools, nonprofits, and local initiatives. And whereas, through three quarters of a century, Goodrows have enhanced the cultural life of our city by celebrating our most important life milestones, including countless weddings, memorials, celebrations, and anniversaries. And whereas, Good Row the Florists has demonstrated remarkable adaptability, resilience in the face of changing times, economic challenges, and industrial transformations, all withholding the traditions and values that have shaped its legacies. Throughout it all, Good Row the Florists has chosen to remain in the City of Saginaw. And whereas, the City of Saginaw proudly recognizes Good Row the Florists for its significant contributions to beautifying our community, sustaining local commerce, and serving generations of family with care and dedication. Now, therefore, it be resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow councilmembers and the citizens of the community, do hereby extend this expression of esteem and gratitude to the Good Row, the Florists, for their profound success in the City of Saginaw over the past 75 years. We congratulate Good Row the Florists and extend our very best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. And witness whereof, I have on to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 20th day of October in the year of our Lord 2025. Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, councilmembers Priscilla Garcia, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Boss, Eric D. Braddock Sr., Carly R. Hammond, Billie Bell Ostache, Jacinda Seals, Heidi Wiggins, and Tobias Young, and Timothy Morales, City Manager.
Come on up, sweetie. Am I saying it right? Good row.
Good row.
Good row. Okay. Come on up, sweetie.
It's okay. I knew it wasn't for him.
Come on up. I need you to make the loop, give your proclamation, and then give us some words.
You first.
It's okay. It's okay. Seventy-five years, she can do it the way she wants.
We all go ahead, too. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sweetie. Yes, there you go. It's okay.
Thank you.
Daughter, you would like, you could come up and say something. Oh, you said, no, no.
She would not.
Okay. I just wanted to offer the opportunity.
She's my silent army. She makes me look good.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, City Councilmembers, Ms. Mayor. You know, 75 seems like a number, but when you put years in back of it, it all of a sudden encompasses so much more. And I hate to sit up here and tell you that my daughter just took a wedding for the third generation bride. We did her grandmother's, her mother's, and now we're doing hers. And when I look back at that, I go, darn, am I old. But I wouldn't have it any other way. We're very, very proud of the fact that people have been coming to us for 75 years. Saginaw has changed quite a bit, and we try to remain the same. Keeping up on trends and changing times is not always an easy thing to do. Fighting for business every day as a small business owner is something that never stops. And I applaud all the small businesses of Saginaw, and I applaud what the city is doing to help those small businesses grow and establish themselves like we have. And I can't thank you enough for being a town to grow up in. That was extraordinary in my point of view. I grew up on Remington between Howard and Brown. I don't know, I don't even know where that is, but we used to get on our bikes and ride down to my father's shop on Jefferson. And we usually planned it about 11:30 in the morning so we could get down there right at lunch. And Dad would take us to lunch. And then from there, we'd walk to Home Dairy. And then he'd give us 10 cents, and we'd go across the street to Kreske's and spend it on candy. And then we'd go back to the flower shop and sweep the floor, wire pine cones, whatever he needed done, and then back home we'd go. And a lot of times, on our way back home, we'd hear Ernie Harwell. And at that time, you could listen to a Tiger Ball game from West Gen- or from East Genesee to Remington and never miss a play because everybody had the radios on, everybody was out on their porches. And it was a great time to grow up in the city. And I still believe that is, that's still alive today, just in a different way. We have to hang on, we have to survive, and we have to find out ways of how to do that. And that's why I think it's so important that an open dialogue is established with all the community leaders and the small businesses of the city. Never stop listening to your mom and pop shops because they are the heart of America and they're the backbone of this country. And we need these small businesses to survive. There again, I thank you very much for the opportunity to say a few words. I certainly will cherish this proclamation, and I'm hoping to see my daughter up here to receive the 100th anniversary proclamation. Thank you.
Can't tell me. Age, age has a lot to do with everything. I call it growing with grace. Madam Clerk.
I'm to public input.
The purpose of public hearing is for us, for the, for the public to address the council. This is not a question or an answer period. Speakers, you have three minutes to say what you need to say. Please get it in those three minutes. If not, I will allow you a couple of more seconds to wrap it up. Our first person is?
First person is Melanie Velasco. I'm to Joyce Seals.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, and staff. I'd like to thank Mr. Morales for co-chairing our Power of a Promise fundraiser along with Bishop Alvarez Johnson. They did a dynamite job, and they did it along with our Promise Zone Director, Deborah Sanchez. This is one of only two events that we host for the Promise each year. I was truly disappointed that none of you were able to attend the event. I knew that one of you, Abubacar Ostache, was out of town and she wasn't able to come. The success of the Promise is a win-win for the city and the school district. It was created by our legislature to be an economic tool to assist in stabilizing and increasing our population. Your understanding and participation goes a long way in supporting this concept. Page three of the book that I gave you, page five, excuse me, will show that we have given over $1,405,747 to 774 students. And the National Student Clearing House through 2024 shows the following, and that's a group that keeps the track of students from the time they start all the way through college. And 49% of Saginaw Promise scholars persisted to the second year. Program certificates, 13. Associate degrees, 56. Bachelor's degrees, 152. Master's degrees, 33. Doctoral candidates, two. Juris doctors, one. And there were 65 degrees that the report showed they did, did not identify the degree level. And many of these students stay in and live and work in Saginaw, and we saw that at the Promise for one of our graduates who's now an LPN, African-American male LPN, and neither his mother or father had gone to college. She was the first one. And he's dill, he went debt-free. I want you to know it's a very important program, and we've got to engage you some kind of way because it started right here at the City of Saginaw. I also want you to know that I haven't dropped our marijuana concerns. We are researching and gathering data right now as we speak, and we will be back. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our next speaker is Dylan Hellus.
We are distinguished people tonight.
Some less than others. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Dylan Hellus. I am here to speak about Covenant Neighborhood Enterprise Zone 3, which is on the docket for tonight. But first, while I'm up here, I'd like to give a brief update on the Extraordinary Neighbors Program that Covenant has kicked off just under two years ago. We have secured funding with our partners at Habitat for Humanity for 12 homes in the Covenant Neighborhood, three of which are, will be receiving certificates of occupancy shortly, with the other nine coming, four coming this fall, and five more coming in the spring. In partnership with Habitat, we've also been able to renovate more than 50 homes, whether it's roofs, windows, paint, porches, things to help people stay in their homes, stay in the neighborhood, and continue to have pride in where they live. We also received through the Healthy Community Zones Grant with MDHHS $500,000 for a renovation of Bliss Park, which we are working with city staff on a design and timeline for the work there. And then finally, we have three employees who will be taking advantage of Covenant's $30,000 in down payment assistance to move into the Covenant Neighborhood, and then an additional 30 employees who are currently working with Habitat on their mortgage readiness and financial literacy to be able to become homeowners shortly themselves. Very exciting, and of course, very proud on behalf of Covenant to share that with you all. As for the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, of the 12 that we, homes that are slated for the neighborhood, 10 of them are located in currently existing Neighborhood Enterprise Zones on the south side and west side of our Cooper and Harrison campuses. And two of the three that are already constructed are in the Neighborhood Enterprise Zones. So these have been a great tool for directing development in key areas around the hospital, near CMU Health, and Mary Freebrot, and also Bliss Park. And really, what I want to make sure you guys know, these are an affordability tool by capping the property taxes over a 15-year period. That helps bring down mortgage costs and helps people who maybe couldn't attain housing in the neighborhood have the opportunity to do so. It's an opt-in program, so if, you know, you guys allow this, and, you know, the people moving in, renovating their home, moving into new homes, choose not to take advantage of the program, there is no loss to the city. But there's also the opportunity for folks to, you know, see some mortgage relief and hopefully become, you know, first-time homeowners here in the City of Saginaw. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Christopher Pryor.
Good evening to our Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, to our City Council, and to all of you councilmen and women. Thank you for your commitment and service to our wonderful city. Sometimes you probably don't get as appreciated as much as you should, but no, we say thank you. Thank you for your time and commitment to make Saginaw stronger. Today, I want to just stand and just say that we are ongoing progress of the Medical Diamond, extremely excited about what is taking place, your work to make sure that things continue to move forward for a healthier, safer community. So we applaud the work and the effort that has been done there. As you've seen, one of my reasons, and former Mayor Seals brought it up, is our progress and the momentum that we are having, but just making sure we're still aware of the effect that the marijuana dispensaries have in our community. And so, of course, we know the effect that it has on our children. I know there is not, we can't close all of them down, but my desire is to ask you to really be strategic in our efforts to continue to monitor and to see what's taking place. I go to our elementary schools every Tuesdays and some Thursdays. I smell the preponderant odor that comes from out of the vehicle that our children ride to school in. It's not a pleasant smell. It affects our children. It affects our education system. Several months ago, I brought to you 75 signatures from business owners within this city who have stated that they are not for this. I would ask that we would just kind of revamp or look as much as possible in regards to life. I've asked some questions that I wrote down, is money more important than the safety and future of our children as well as of our families? Are we investing in solving a problem while we're simultaneously feeding into it? With that being the case, one of the key things that I would ask is that we would, I know we can't undo the medicinal purposes and the recreation, but if we would reopen dialogue on a citywide moratorium, I think that is very important, if we can have some form of discussion, if we can implement new zoning ordinances, looking at the density and those areas of where they're at. If we can also use the New Innocence Doctrine to be able to look at some things so that the, those in authority under the New Innocence Doctrine can regulate or shut down operations that are harmful to public health. Last, I would ask you to look at exploring maybe a sunset clause. I am not a lawyer, but I would ask you to look in avenues rather than just bringing problems, looking at solutions of what we can do, and then we can prioritize our community voice in regards to initiatives to keep Saginaw stronger and safer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, please make us remarks of council.
Councilmembers, you have three minutes as well. We will begin tonight with Councilman Young.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming to your meeting. What I did in the past week during fire prevention, I attended that and attended the awards ceremony, and I had the opportunity to hear a lot of what the firefighters have done in the community and a lot of what they've done and accomplished and got awards for. I didn't even hear about it in the news, you know, the life-saving measures and different things that happened. So that was a good experience to see, you know, what those public servants do. And I like to speak to the marijuana issue, and I am for, you know, ordinances or moratoriums to make sure that that doesn't also become an issue, just like the liquor store problem. I think the community has an oversaturation of liquor stores that adds to it, too, so I understand the need to not, you know, make another industry the same way, but we already have a existing issue of oversaturation of liquor stores. That's the hub for the crime and blight in the city. So I think that needs to be addressed as well. So we putting some together to address one industry, it seems like that similar industry would fall under that, and we could, you know, make some progress in that area, too. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Seals.
Good evening, everyone. I just, I had a great last two weeks. I met a couple of firefighters at my school, at Francis Ray Academy, and we had a fire drill, and they were commending our school on having a very quick response to getting out the school. And I was telling the students about our, the program at the high school, how they can become firefighters, and our kids were very excited becoming firefighters when they leave high school. And so the firefighters were actually promoting it to our students, and I work at a K-8 school, so they were really excited about being firefighters. And so that was pretty cool, just to hear the dialogue between the firefighters and the students at my school, and they were so young. So just to see the firefighters having those dialogues out in the community with little ones was really cool to see. Also, speaking about small businesses today and listening to you speak today, I'm a small business owner, and I truly believe that small business owners are the backbone of the community and of our country, of our economy. And so they have been on a decline lately, but we are coming back up. And without small businesses, we will, I mean, our country will not make it. And so I know the economists, they know that it takes small businesses for our country to run. And so I'm glad that, you know, your business hung in there and have survived all that time, which is a blessing. And so it was good to see that you received that award today and just give us, us newer small businesses, just hope that, you know, we can make it 75 years. So that was awesome for, for us to see today. Also, I did attend the Riverfront Development Committee Commission meeting and the City County School Liaison Committee meeting this, the last two weeks. So I've been pretty busy for the last two weeks, so I had a pretty, pretty awesome time. I'm tired. So, yeah. So that's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Boss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a lot to say today, but I would like to congratulate you on the 75 years. Your speeches are so nice, I think I might have come down there and get some flowers from my wife. So we...
I'm gonna hold you to that.
I appreciate it. Anyway, I too remember going to Parker Dairy's, and it was really nice. And I remember I getting my quarters and nickels and going to Kreske's, too, so you brought up a lot of good memories, you know, walking downtown, you know, from four or five blocks away, going downtown, enjoying ice cream, and stopping at the meat market, and he gave us a piece of that ring bologna the kids would eat. So we got all good memories from downtown Saginaw. But, yes, yes, I am. Brenda's a little bit older than me, too, so I can remember her as the lifeguard at the...
Shut up, my business.
Holding swimming pool, so.
You tell it, my business.
Hey, we would like tadpoles looking up at Brenda from the diving ward, brother.
That's personal.
I'd like to say, too, to Pastor Pryor, I had the opportunity to spend some time with him and some of his parishioners and the help group down in Lansing at the Community Violence Intervention Program in Lansing we had a couple of weeks ago. We got a lot of good information to bring back to combat crime and drugs issues in our city. It was really good to see the state policemen down there doing what they're doing. They got a lot of good things happening to help out our community. So I'm looking forward to adding those to the rest of the things that we're doing in our community, help our kids stay out of trouble. I've been busy, too. My, I had another granddaughter got married in Detroit last week, so I'm happy about that. Somebody else can pick up the reins. But, you know, they're growing up and getting older, man, so I just thank God to be here, you know, to see that. So, thank you, Brenda. I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ostache.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, to the Anderson Center tonight and those watching from home. Just a few things, over the last couple of weeks, the city had their citywide meeting, which was at our Fire Department's Training Center, also led by our Fire Department Chief, Brandon, and so he did a great job, did some really good information there that night, and then they also kind of touched on the arson watch program that's coming up, too. So there's more information out there on that. Proclamation, congratulations. When I first moved into the city, I moved into a house that Michael had lived in, Michael Goodrow, so we always used to share stories about Sheridan Avenue. And then I moved over on Delaware Street, so I was right down the street from you, and I had used Jared Flores's shop before, too, so thank you. Congratulations. Dylan, that's exciting news. I'm excited to see this next NEZ on the docket tonight. There's a lot of good things that are happening over at Covenant. If nobody's seen these homes, they're really nice, they fit the neighborhood, and it's just a good thing that you guys are doing over there. So thanks for continuing that. And I believe I was at your kickoff when the tent was up. I can't be for sure, but I'm pretty sure. So another thing, too, is, again, we talked about Mayor Seals, you brought up the Saginaw Promise. These are some really interesting statistics when you take a look at this, so hats off to everything that you're doing with that program, and hopefully next year I can get a ticket to the event and join you. Something else, and we also brought up the dispensaries in the city. Again, I know Ms. Seals, you and I have spoke, and you emailed me. Pastor Pryor, feel free to get my email address off the city website, send me an email. I'd love to have a conversation. It's more than we can talk about here. Sometimes we have to bring in our legal team, and we start talking about moratoriums and capping and how we're set up in the city. I can say that the new zoning that the city has, not only did it offer some new incentives for small businesses, again, in the neighborhood, especially in the Catedro District, but also rezone the city for where the dispensaries can actually be, and kind of brought those GIS maps down, so it kind of tightened it up a little bit. So feel free to give me a call, I'd love to talk to you about that. Just an announcement, something that I saw come through in my 30 seconds that I had left. If you need assistance from Consumers Energy, they do offer their CARES program. Again, visit their website or call them to see if you qualify. The median income is booked against the state of Michigan, so it's $43,000-ish and less, so help with your heating bill. So get ahold of them on that, and I am out of time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Braddock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say thanks to everyone that's here today for coming to your meeting. Also, I'd just like to say there's a lot of good things going on in Saginaw, a lot of good, a lot of work getting put in by, you know, the individuals at this table and the citizens inside the city. We also have Halloween coming up, the Trunk of Trees. I know VCD has a 28th Halloween party on Ninth Street at the soon-to-be Impact Center. Holden Jones Neighborhood Association having one on the 30th, Trunk of Trees. So, you know, come out and support. So, you know, come out and support those also. I know the city has theirs on the 22nd. Pretty much I was able to attend the gun violence where Mr. Boss was at. And we did receive a lot of good information from the Michigan State Police and a few others, cities who are battling and helping reduce the gun violence. And so we just have to continue to put in the work. There are plenty of organizations and we had a plenty of representation from Saginaw there. And so even with the Saginaw Police Department and help and VCD. So we down there getting a lot of good information to bring back and hopefully we can curb the violence and give our kids and give our youth something to look forward to, for the most part. And so other than that, let's continue to work together, continue to push forward through, you know, and let's make a change and make Saginaw, make Saginaw a better place. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Wiggins.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Thank you to everyone who's attended the meeting tonight. Congratulations again to the Goodrow family. Thank you for putting on hard work and love and dedication into the city of Saginaw. I've received lots of flowers from your house. So thank you. Beautiful. Again, thank you for all the speakers that came. Just a couple of announcements. I think it's, the NAG meeting is tomorrow, Neighborhood Association Action Group. They're having it at the Castle Museum at noon. They're also, they're going to announce there the winner of the neighborhood, what is it? It's like a neighborhood best yard winner. That's tomorrow at noon at the Castle Museum. As some have already mentioned, we're going to have a lot of activity for Halloween, a lot of trunk retreats in the area. Hope you can attend at least one of them. Wanted to mention one in particular that's going to be happening on the Genesee Corridor sponsored by Terry Reed and his Team Loyalty. That's going to be on the 30th in the afternoon. It's going to be up and down Genesee. So I plan on being there as well as the city one that's going to be on Wednesday. So if it's anything like the event, the thank you to the customers in the summer, it's something to see. So I'm excited to attend that. And as well as the Promise Meeting, I'm sorry I missed that. I do plan on, I want to know more about it and the work that's being done is amazing. And I would be excited to attend next year. So thank you for reminding me of that and I'm sorry I missed that. And that's, I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Hammie.
Thank you. And thank you and congratulations to the Goodrow family and your operated business. That's phenomenal. I love the mural every time I drive by it. It's absolutely beautiful and it's a great, it's a great staple to have in the community. And last week I attended a meeting put on by an organization called the People's Water Board Coalition. And this was about water affordability measures in the state of Michigan. So as we all know, utility bills continue to rise, outpacing the wages that people may have seen a modest increase in, and the costs just keep getting bigger and bigger. And from municipal standpoint, we are very lucky to have our own municipally-owned water supply right here in town. We have amazing quality water. But a lot of maintaining that infrastructure depends on, you know, encumbering ourselves in debt services that cost more every year and feeding that beast of increased cost and increased cost and increased debt and increased debt is just something that's difficult to manage and it falls onto the consumers. It falls onto every one of us as just one other line item that increases our cost of living every single year. So water affordability is a specific bill package. It kind of saw the light of day at the end of 2024 in the state legislature. Unfortunately, it was not passed. It was something that I support. But also, you know, it affects every single municipality here because I think it's a tragedy to shut people's water off. It's not fair. It's not right to do it. I don't support water shut offs as a means of, you know, shaking people down for their bottom dollar. And it unfortunately oftentimes those bond debt services come with a cost of, if your collection rates aren't high enough, your interest rates get worse. And so those costs are even ballooning for municipalities every year. So, you know, I support every single water assistance program that comes before me, but at the end of the day, assistance is usually per application. It's means tested. It's burdensome. Those applications are sometimes in person and it takes months to get a meeting to fill that out. So I'd encourage, you know, fellow council members and members of the community. Our water bills are probably not going down anytime soon. This is just a cost that keeps increasing. And as we have to take care of our legacy infrastructure to make sure that our water is safe, it's something that we have to keep investing in. So water affordability is something that could be an answer for us. And I encourage folks out there to check into that in the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Thank you for attending this evening's meeting. Yes, to the Goodrow family, thank you for your service. 75 years speaks volumes. I'm a small business owner myself, so I understand your work and commitment and all that goes into, and I always say, your best marketing, your word of mouth and your work explains. So 75 years, that's awesome. I commend you. And I know my parents owned a store. We didn't last very long because of the economy at the time, but it's hard work. It really is. I mean, it's really a commitment for your family and all those are involved and all these generations that you guys, 75 years is remarkable. That's all I got to say. Kudos to you guys and keep up the good work. Hopefully I'll be around, I don't know how old your daughter is, but hopefully 25 years I'll be around to see that 100-year mark. And also to Mr. Heelis, if I'm seeing a Neighborhood Association, I've been down there not this year due to my health, but the last couple of years I did go volunteer and I did paint some shutters in the neighborhood with the Habitat and it was a great community event. And this year I would have went, but I was having a little bit of health issues this year, but it's always a good time. For volunteering, you do get good food that they give out, so that's always a plus. If you want to go volunteer, you left that part out. I think you would get more people down there, but they have great food every day. There's so many different vendors that are giving food and stuff. So I've had TNT down there. I think I've had like Papa John's. So there's, I've been down there a couple of times, so I know the drill. And the neighborhood is great. It looks nice down there. You guys are doing a great job. So thanks for coming and reporting. Like I said, I didn't get to go this year. And then awesome, this is Seals, thank you for your guys' efforts for doing the scholarship. Our youth, we need that mentorship. I'm a first-generation college student and I know how hard and it was so easier for me to give up being a young teen mom. But when you have a great foundation and a support system that's rooting for you, you give these kids hope every day knowing that there's somebody like you out there advocating for them and Ms. Sanchez and that. So that's awesome. Kudos to you for your hard work. Another note, if you know anybody that needs a food assistance, Monday, October 27th at 9:00 a.m., Eastside Soup Kitchen is doing their drive-through giveaway. I know the need is going to be great. We're hearing about the cuts possibly to the SNAP for November. So also the United Way, they always list on Mondays the different food giveaways during the week. And I always share them as a community alert on my page. So if you know anybody that needs any help with that. So they always do it every Monday. So it's helpful for those. They even have some in the St. Charles area. So they list a lot of different ones if you're in need. This week, trunk or treat, it's always a great time with the council members, so we look forward to that. And then I'll be for the arson watch this week, giving out some tips and pointers. We are still looking for volunteers next Thursday and Friday. So if you have somebody you can ride with, come on down. We appreciate all the help. And that's all, because my time's up. Thanks.
Thank you. All week has been busy as always, but my public speakers, thank you. Pastor Pryor, we did do a moratorium. We did a whole year. We gave the community one whole year to come up. Don't have a problem with reopening stuff, but it's going to be a process. Okay? It is going to be a process. Mayor Seals, I don't even know where I was on the 16th. I'll be honest. Anytime there's something going on, if you send it to the office, trust me, the two secretaries in there, Rachel and Vicky, will let me know right away and will make sure that it's on my calendar. Again, we do have, we do have Halloween coming up. And so council members, I'm asking if you can bring some candy, come stand at this table with us, because the city is going to provide the hot dogs, co-golds. Maybe I said the wrong one, but they're going to have hot dogs. This has been a real exciting week, because throughout the whole city of Saginaw, they've been doing trick or treat. And so it's always good to see the little ones dressed up in their tutus, running around at the Halloween parties. I did too. I had an opportunity to go to the fire awards ceremony, which I hardly ever miss. And our new councilman got introduced to public speaking. He wrote, he read the proclamation and he said to me, "But I'm not Brenda Moore." I said, "But you just read." So you can say Brenda Moore. He got to that point, it was like, "I'm not Brenda Moore." Like, "Okay, you'll be okay. You'll be okay." Know this, 75 years is a milestone. Continue prayers and blessings for another 75 more years. I utilize you a lot. Wish you was there. Won't you in Michigan? Tell me you were. No, that wasn't you. But anyways, I've been utilizing you for years and you do have beautiful flowers. Not to say nobody else does, but you do have, that's right, mama, stand up. But it is going to take village. We talked about and laughed, me and Michael laughed about coming up as kids. Where you stay, I'm not too far from you living, born, bred and raised. So I know that the neighborhoods are changing. For anyone who went to that conference in Lansing, I didn't go, but y'all know I got a tape on it. So, thank you, Madam Clerk.
I have some reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we did have several council members said we had a lot of events going on and we do have a lot coming up. As the clerk mentioned, we do have the Fourth Annual We Love Saginaw Businesses Trunk or Treat Event hosted by the city, Downtown Development Authority and the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation. This Wednesday from 4:30 to 6:30 in the parking lot across the lawn here, Celebration Park Splash Pad, 1830 Fortney Street. We currently have over 50 businesses signed up to participate. So that's a great, great group. City staff are going to be participating as well and they'll be working the city, SEDC and DDA booths. Council members are welcome to join us. You can come to the city booth or any of those three if you'd like to help out. Just make sure you call Vicky Davis in my office so we know you're coming. The Saginaw Fire Department hosted their annual awards ceremony and open house on October 7th. And want to congratulate, there were several citizens who received awards for bravery that they did and assisted other citizens, firefighters and also supporters who were recognized at the event. And special recognition goes to our Saginaw Firefighter of the Year, which is Lieutenant Colin Horgan. He is recognized for leadership, professionalism and dedication to city and Saginaw Fire Department. And I also want to thank the Fire Department, Chief Housebeck and the fire crew for hosting the citywide meeting on October 8th. Great opportunity for residents to learn more about fire safety, arson watch and the type of training conducted by the Saginaw firefighters. The Burn House, they did a demonstration of the training they do at the Burn House. I think that was the first time I saw it, but it's pretty phenomenal, amazing that they, they go into that and can complete the exercise. And Chief gave a great narrative of what they were doing in there and comparing it to what happens when they go into a house. So great to learn. I'm sure that Chief would give anyone a tour of any fire station and do other demonstrations in the future as well. And want to congratulate TriStar Trust. They had their groundbreaking for their new building on Washington Avenue. So they're investing here in the city. They're already in the city, but this is going to be a regional hub for them. Significant new building on the Riverfront. It's really the first, one of the first new builds in the Medical Diamond Project, hopefully first of many. Also, within that Medical Diamond Project, Consumers Energy is completing their portion of the power line project. They're burying those lines and they should be completed in the next two weeks. You're still going to see the poles up until next year. There's some other utilities on there that we're working with to bring those down. But they should be down next summer as we continue to coordinate with consumers. I want to thank our former mayor, Joyce Seals, for coming and talking about the Saginaw Promise. I had a lot of those stats on my paper as well because they're pretty phenomenal. Can have a huge impact on our community. As she said, a lot of those students stay here. They want to stay here in the city and they want to get the education and move on. And I'll echo what she said about, I think his name was William Hodgkin, he's an LPN. He gave a great speech at the event talking about the impact the education has had on him. And he has a job. He wanted to, he wanted to get a nursing degree, I think they said, since he was a kid. And he said several times he's debt-free. So he really encouraged the kids to continue their education and not to worry about the cost because of the Saginaw Promise. And I say that, I think the event had more attendees. I think this was the most attendees that they've had, which is also encouraging. And I would think that, I've been on the board since this summer, but the, a number of people on the board, they're all volunteers. Pretty much the entire operation is volunteers other than one employee. So they put a lot of time into it, a lot of planning and it's great to see. So I want to thank Mayor Seals for inviting me to be on the board. Also, we have been receiving additional information about the state budget. Gas and weight taxes, you know, there's a change with sales tax and gas and weight tax. That's going to impact us two ways. It's going to significantly increase our road budget. So our current year, we are expecting to receive $2.8 million in additional revenue and $4.3 million next year. So that's a pretty significant increase for us. It's going to, the budget is going to decrease our general fund revenue sharing allocation because the exchange in the gas and weight tax is removing sales tax from gas. So revenue sharing comes from sales tax. Right now, we're looking at probably about $220,000 in decrease in general fund revenue. So we're currently looking at the budget and ways to absorb that loss. But definitely a pretty significant increase in road money. And finally, we did have, as Councilmember Seals mentioned, we had our city-county school liaison meeting this week. And we had a short presentation from the League of Women Voters. And I had talked to Karen Lawrence Webster about this project previous to that presentation and its proposal to create Saginaw, City of Saginaw Youth Council. So the purpose is to engage our City of Saginaw public school students in local government and for the students to identify an issue that the city council can consider for change. And the participating students, the proposed target audience is City of Saginaw Public School District with Saginaw United and Saginaw Arts and Sciences Academy. Nine total students, six from Saginaw United and three from SASSA, ninth to 12th grade and City of Saginaw residents. A selection project would be determined, a selection process would be determined through an application process with the schools. So participating city council members and city administration, each city council person would be designated as a mentor to one of the students. The council members serving on the Saginaw County City School Liaison Committee would represent the city and help coordinate the event along with members that the mayor may delegate. And to move forward with this, we're looking for full city council support to officially partner with the school district on this project. Any meetings involving a quorum of council members and students would fall under the Open Meetings Act. City staff would present to student groups about their roles in local government, including Office of Management, Budget, Development, Wastewater, Elections, Public Safety and Other Departments. And coordination would be a joint effort between a member of the city council, or members of the city council and the faculty representatives from SASSA and the Saginaw United School. The city manager's office would provide organizational support such as scheduling meetings, reserving city facilities and coordinating with departments for tours and presentations and contacting city staff and reserving rooms. The city, the schools would also provide that administrative support. And the supporting organization is the Saginaw County League of Women Voters and they would facilitate initial meetings until the youth council is established. So that was, I think, supported by our entire city school liaison committee. So if any of the members of that committee, and I, I'm sorry, I leave out councilmen. So, if any of the members of that committee, and I, I'm sorry, I leave out councilman, or councilwoman Wiggins had also worked with Karen Lawrence Webster on this previously. So, any other council members wanna comment on that group?
You did a fine job. I didn't even know you was there and you still got a good report. But you did good.
All right, that's all I have. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Tim.
Do we have any questions for the city manager?
I would add, I would add one thing. So, if for, if the council does want to move forward with this, I bet would be, I think I defer to the clerk and the city attorney, but I think it would just be a simple consent motion directing city administration and the city-county-school liaison members to proceed with this project with the school district.
So move.
Okay, so, a council member can make their recommendation during miscellaneous. Any questions on the city manager? I have one. We are nearing the cutoff for ARPA dollars. We have some agencies or, it's a question. Do we have any jeopardy of returning money for groups that have not proceeded? I know that we have one. We talked about it for a minute, but we didn't stay on it. I think the council needs to take a look at as well as to what, what's the next step? Cause we don't wanna give money back if we don't have to. So hard to get it, you don't wanna give it back. So, do, can you, can you report out for us?
Yep, I think the only one that we don't see proceeding was the one that we provided a memo to council for on August eighth and it's the Saginaw Just Transition Organization. We had identified through our consultants and our city staff five concerns and recommended some changes to that. There are two options, either changes or terminate the recipient agreement. And we did set up meetings, I think with staff and Guide House, our consultant. I think most council members had an opportunity, I'm not sure. Councilmember Young has done that yet. I know he's met with several staff members. But we can definitely send you that memo again so that you can review it and advise if you have any questions.
I think that all of us need to really get serious because the money was supposed to be allocated, but when the money is allocated, it's allocated for what you asked it for. You can't change it midstream. And we really need to look at that cause we looking at another month and we gotta prepare a report. And in that report, any monies that is not totally committed or spent, we have to refund. So, I think that council as a whole, we have an obligation to the citizen. Remember, any money that we pull back or clawback on, as we call it, that money will go into the housing program, which will help roofing and furnaces. Fifty percent goes there and the other fifty percent goes in parks and recreation. So, council members, please, I think we really need to take a look cause we only talking a month. And we don't wanna get caught with doing falsified reports. We say we transparent, let's be transparent. Any other questions? Yes.
Yeah, thanks Mayor. Yeah, and Timmy, I've been thinking about when you talked about the budget tonight. I haven't really had the chance to see what's coming from the state. I will be paying attention to MML. The stuff they put out and the two-oh-eight blogs and then anything that they'll do at their Monday meetings. And by the way, too, if you can't get their Live with the League on Monday, it's always on their Facebook page afterwards. But you mentioned the road funding and that's a pretty substantial. Do they, do they, do we know where the funding would have to go? Cause when people ask questions about roads, I always look to Phil and staff. Cause it gets complicated, or Travis. Cause it could be local roads or is it just the state roads, major roads?
That's the state.
Do they have to be state roads? PAC fifty-one? Okay, all right, that makes sense, that makes sense. I do know that there was some, a twenty-four percent tax on the cannabis industry too, which should help. Increase in road funding as well, so, okay. And thanks for bringing up the, this will be my second last thing. You brought up the Fire Department, congratulations to our Firefighter of the Year. I am working in the office fifty percent of the time now, so I can't just jump over, jump back. So, I was not, I was in the office that day and I missed your event. But I'll try to, I will be retiring in twelve months, so then I will be full-time.
Yeah, right.
I can make all your events again, but congratulations. It's always a great event. Thank you.
Yes, councilman, which one? Seals?
I wanted to ask Tim.
You gotta talk loud.
I wanted to ask Tim, is there a way we can see how much ARPA dollars are, have been spent already so that we can make a decision as a whole? So, we can properly able to make this decision together?
Yep, it's on the city website.
Okay.
There's the ARPA section, so you can look at what's been allocated and what's been spent on the projects. We'll send a link out so that it's easier for you to get to.
Any other question, wait, Mike? Was it a question down here? Yes, councilman.
I have a question about the surface friction test that's gonna be on, that's coming up.
You gotta talk loud too.
With the surface friction test that's coming up. Far as the test, what's the timeline on that test and also if approved? And then also, based off the results of the test?
Yeah, I think it's probably more appropriate to wait till that consent agenda for that.
Just make sure you make an exception.
You have to talk louder, we can't hear you over here.
We can hear, we all hear.
You don't work. Councilman Boss, a bit of a question.
Thanks for calling my name, Mayor. Tim, I notice in the budget that a lot of charitable organizations that we normally gave to for the last two or three years, some of them are not getting any funds at all. Is that because of the, did we get less funds? Or the organizations are not doing what they used to do or what?
I think that's under, that's under the consent agenda too, so we probably wanna wait till we get to that point.
Are you talking CDBG or ARPA?
CDBG, right?
CBG.
Yes, councilman.
Manager Morales, have you received any guidance from the state? Cause I believe it's the road funding that you mentioned set to hopefully increase that's tied to the increased marijuana tax. I believe that's gonna be challenged in court. Was there any guidance from the officials you were talking to about potentially affected timelines? Or if that gets tied up in court, that the money won't be there? Or was there any discussion at all about that issue?
No, and I think the, the road fund increase that I mentioned was all related to the, the gas tax. This is my understanding from engineering. So, if there's another one, another source of that, no, we, I don't think we've had any update regarding that funding.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one more.
Yes.
I know that we also were able to meet with, I think, Guide House and I know I wasn't able to make that meeting. Is there a way that we can get that information on each entity that receive ARPA dollars so that we can make a cohesive decision on the monies that they receive for ARPA and their application information? So, it won't just be a dollar amount for that particular organization, but that we can see their actual applica, their initial application with their dollar amount to go, that coincide with what they applied for initially?
We have that if you wanna stop in the city manager's office and see Vicky. We have a phone that has all the info.
So that I can make a very, you know, comprehensive decision and not just one off of a dollar. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, takes us to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda leaving room for exceptions. Do I have any exceptions?
One.
Yes.
thirteen.
Any other exceptions? Who in none, all those in favor, say me five by saying aye. All those opposed next. Madam Clerk.
Approve the purchase. Excuse me, with SME for seven-thousand-nine-hundred dollars to coordinate and conduct testing of surface friction at Celebration Skate Park for the Public Services Department Facilities Division. That was Councilmember Brannick.
Yes, my question was, when is the timeline, once it's approved? When will be the timeline, will that be finished within the season? And then also, based off the results of the test, how would that, how would that influence the opening and closing of the park?
Yeah, so, I think that once it's approved, they'll be able to mobilize fairly quickly to do the work. Do you wanna address that?
As you may say, I know department head is up in here.
It is scheduled for tomorrow if it's approved tonight.
Okay.
Any more questions?
I got another question.
I thought that people. No, no, we gotta let him pass it, then we come back and then I'll open it up.
Motion to approve.
Opened by discussion.
I thought the people that was doing this, the painting, had already did the research to find out that the paint will hold up. So, why are we doing this again?
Because experts are telling us the paint is what, the paint, the type of paint is okay, but application may make a difference in the friction. So, we are testing the non-painted surfaces and the painted surfaces to verify that there are similar friction factors. To be safe. That's why.
So, in other words, they did their research and they said it was safe. Now, we gonna do, double up on it because?
I'm sorry, so, we're testing it to protect the city for reliability reasons.
Yes, to be safe.
There are several skateboarders and there are other organizations that say that any paint can impact the friction and can make it less safe. So, our goal is to determine if that, if this paint has done that and if it has, we're hoping there isn't a change, a difference in the friction level so that we can just proceed. Right now, we've given that, given the organization the ability to paint vertical surfaces, but we're not painting the skate surfaces at this time. I don't know if they've proceeded or not, but I've been talking with them, Phil Carwatt has. But that's our goal is to make sure that, so that we can reassure the community that it is safe.
Yes.
If it rains tomorrow, will the test be rescheduled?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'd have to let you know.
Okay. And for the, I know in the information that this council received, uh, information on the particularities of the paint and the application process and the VOCs and all that, it was mentioned that there's a curing process that has to be completed in order for it to, you know, have its full retention. Has that, has that timeline been fulfilled for the painted surfaces?
You're talking about the paint?
Yeah.
I would assume it has occurred on what's been painted out there, yes.
Okay. What is like the level of acceptability for slippage? I have no idea what a slip test would even entail. Is there like a score? Yeah.
I can't tell you, but the equipment they're using is being shipped, was shipped already up to their Michigan office from Texas.
Okay. And if the paint, what would happen if the test is a failure for friction?
You mean if they don't match? We would, we would have to look at the results and make a decision on what to do.
Okay. For other skate parks.
One more. You get two questions. Okay, but they're running over into more than two. So, go ahead.
For the... I totally lost my train of thought. So, does this company often do slip tests to this? I've just never heard, yeah, friction, sorry?
Yes, they do.
Okay, okay. And do you know what kind of equipment is involved in that?
I don't.
Okay.
We can take a picture if you'd like, or you could come out. Maybe see it happen. I think Mr. Carwatt does, he made these arrangements. I don't know all those details, sorry.
You might wanna make a point and then they could probably go into detail.
Yeah.
More in the office. Councilwoman Hammie, in that way you can get your questions answered. Any other?
Thank you. For other communities and areas that have painted their skate parks already, was there any outreach to other like cited locations that had been painted? Did they use a similar kind of paint? Were there similar concerns?
The type of paint that was used, there's no problem with that paint, according to others that have painted. Including the manuf, or the person that designed the skate park.
They confirmed that it was an acceptable type of paint.
Yes.
What they did say, depending on the application methods, it could cause additional issues with, for slippage.
Yes, exactly.
This is our way to be able to confirm whether it does or doesn't. Just, I mean, if, if, we have to ensure that it is safe.
If the test is completed tomorrow, do you know how soon the results will be?
Tests are scheduled for Tuesday and Thursday.
Okay.
Sorry, first day is tomorrow. That might be a rain backup, but, or it might be taking two days.
And the result timeframe?
I, I don't know that. Assuming it's pretty quick.
The question is really the liability on the, on the city. That's really the question.
I think having a skate park is a liability.
Well, it is, but, you know, we approved it. And so, now we need to make sure that the citizens are safe. At this point, it don't matter if it was tested or whatever. We just gotta make it right now.
I just, I just would like to say, I think, I'm not for sure if we made the decision to check the, the application part, but whoever did, I thank them for checking that. I'm not sure how we came to that conclusion, but thank you. So that, you know, we're covering ourselves. So, thank you for checking the application in, in this process so that we are covering ourselves.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? All those in favor, say me five by saying aye. All those opposed next. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any board of commission reports of any city activity? Yes.
I did it to the Riverfront Development Commission. And I know also that our... City manager was there also with me and we did have a, we had a new chair, a vice chair. We talked about our role in this very historic moment because right now, we're kinda redeveloping ourselves. Right now, there's some very historic things happening in Saginaw right now. Saginaw is going through a redevelopment and this hasn't happened in a long time in our city. So, we're just trying to find our place and kinda where we fit and how we're going to proceed in, in our capacity and how we will position ourselves and work with the city council. So, we talked about a lot of things, the Medical Diamond. We talked about the DDA and Old Town or Riverfront. Even Ojibwe Island, how we'll work with city council. So, I think the, Tim probably has a little more specifics cause he spoke a little bit more than I did, but I think I took more notes than anything. But there is a lot of information going on in, in that meeting that I learned a lot in that meeting, so I'll let you speak from here. Okay.
Yes.
I also attended the school liaison meeting where Tim talked about, gave a good brief of that earlier. Just looking forward to working with the youth and, you know, we seeing other cities. I've been seeing other cities and other youth, I mean, other communities doing it, so I'm looking forward for us doing it. So, I'm looking forward for us doing it. Heidi, and been working with Heidi from the beginning with this. And so, we'd like to see it grow to where it need to be. So, looking forward to that. And looking forward to all the city council's support on it as well. And so, we're looking to move forward with that soon. That's all.
Anybody else? I'd like to thank Councilwoman Wiggins. Because when I asked her, she didn't hesitate. She said, oh, sure. She wanted to be a part of that, so I do want to thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
For hanging in there. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Onto appointment of board commission and committee members.
We have two appointments, and we're going to do them together, leaving room for exceptions. We have two appointments, leaving room for exceptions. I need a motion.
So moved.
Is there any exceptions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Onto resolutions. We have one, and it's establishing neighborhood enterprise zone covenant three.
I need a motion to adopt. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Onto miscellaneous business. Our first item there is consideration of FOIA appeal submitted by Catherine Ellison.
I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to uphold the estimated fee associated with Catherine Ellison's FOIA request.
It's been moved in support. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'm sorry, who had the second? Okay, thank you.
May I approach you? It was quiet, but she did it.
It was.
It's so quiet.
He heard me, though. That's not his business.
Can I ask the clerk to repeat the motion, please, that's on the floor?
Yes. Can you repeat the motion?
Yep, the motion is to uphold the estimated fee associated with Catherine Ellison's FOIA request.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Did I get a nay? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Seals.
Aye.
Councilmember Balls.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache.
Yes.
Councilmember Bradda.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Nay.
And Mayor Moore.
Yes.
You have eight yes and one no. That motion is approved. Our second item under miscellaneous business is consideration of FOIA appeal filed by Jamar Barnes.
I need a motion.
I move to uphold the estimated fee associated with Jamar Barnes' FOIA request.
I need a second.
Second.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
It's so quiet down there. Councilwoman Wiggins. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
You're still under miscellaneous business.
We're still in miscellaneous business. Councilman Balls, you wanted to make a recommendation.
Yes, I do, that we go along with the recommendation for the students to be a part of our council that the manager was talking about earlier.
Creation of a City of Saginaw Youth Council with cooperation from the Saginaw School District and the City-County School Liaison Committee.
I propose we ask council to direct the city personnel, city clerk, city attorney, and city-county-school liaison to vote for with the creation of the City of Saginaw Youth Council.
Good notes.
So, the motion is made. We're going to reverse it. By Councilwoman Seals, you can tell she's an educator. She's always writing. I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
No, miscellaneous business.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.